Mr. Ocean.
Here.
Mr. Stainster.
Here.
Mr. Doolittle.
Here.
Mr. Clareman.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Watson.
Here.
Thank you. We're here six oh and one. Please stand for the end of the call. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Chilwell County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf for the better of all. This we pray in your name. Amen. You know about that.
I thought you were going to say, why?
Oh, your license is for an act of.
Truly all way.
Why you should.
God.
Because.
We can't change.
Right. Maybe. Probably have a little different agenda today. We're going to meet and interview the candidate for District Four. Mr. C. So who would like to start? Tom, nine twelve.
Sure.
I'm not seeing my note this first morning.
My name is Tom Eustace. I am a Inverness Township resident in a county. A great deal of interest in being the District Four representative to the Board of Commissioners. I've been Inverness Township resident since nineteen eighty-five. I was born and raised in the city of Chilwell. I lived in the city of Chilwell until I was twenty-three and moved to Muskegon, Michigan. Where I resided in Muskegon for fifteen years, working in manufacturing by a company called Lauren Industries, though the quality manager. At that facility, it's a little into that slide. I, uh, my wife is also from Chilwell, Connecticut. Uh, we were married in nineteen eighty-one. And after living fifteen years in Muskegon County, we had two children, two young children, four at a time. We decided to move back to Chilwell County. Chilwell County is our favorite county in the country. That's why they raise their children here, uh, there. So in nineteen ninety-five, on that night, our two children moved back here to, uh, Chilwell, Inverness Township, so we reside in home. But I bought nineteen ninety-five, so I've been at that allocation for three years. I was, I've been in public administration. In fact, I'm a former county employee in nineteen ninety-seven. The county hired me to, to kickstart their user rapid information systems program. Something new that counties and municipalities were, were engaged in. And so because of my experience in data collection and being a quality manager, I think it somewhat fit, um. So that department was in the equalization department. I'd say while I was in the equalization department, I got on the set. And in two thousand and one, the city assessor position opened up. So I, I applied for that, uh, and, um, I was worth the job, you know? Never forget the day that I was called, um, to be offered this job. It was on September eleventh, two thousand and one. I was on the phone with Benson and Andrew, Scott Neal. And he was offering me the job. And he says something's going on in New York. He had views on the internet. At the time I was talking to the World Trade Center, it got hit. So that was nice to me. It was a sad day and a good day for me, but a sad day for the rest of the time. So I, I moved up in the city and became the planning and zoning administrator in seventy, two thousand and ten. Uh, was the city assessor. Um, and then elevated to the city manager where I was city manager for almost seven years. Retired in twenty twenty-one, somewhere in twenty twenty-one. Seven years was more than enough. For the municipality. So that's, so I moved out. Um, I had a, probably the most difficult thing I did as a city manager was to, to facilitate the renovation of the waste treatment plants. We were, the city was in administrative concern. We had multiple violations in the treatment plant. Mainly because of, I'm certainly in the black system that the, the city didn't have the money to continually upgrade it. So it's a very difficult task and it was, as infrastructure, things like that evolved. Back in, uh, back at, at the World War Two, in eighty-eighties, municipalities could afford to make those improvements. The costs of infrastructure, they've gone up so significantly. And municipalities, revenue is low. So it's a really, really tough task to be able to top those kind of infrastructure burdens. Uh, I say it was difficult because there is monies available, there's grants available. Can we give you a twenty million dollar grant or twenty million dollar loan and grant, five percent of it? What brand? Basically, the money came from the United States Department of Agriculture, who was the U N. State of Michigan, regardless of what the Stegler finances. But to be able to apply for those infrastructure grants, you have to do the engineering. Well, the engineering cost was a million dollars. So we had to raise sewer rates significantly, which had made the city people were attached for it to Chilwell. We had to do that. But if the engineering got, gets a waste treatment plant back into the clients, which is today. And, and being so, um, we have a state-of-the-art waste treatment plant now. The Inverness Township uses that for it. It's a service in Inverness Township. Which is one of my goals should I be selected to be a county commissioner. I want to work with the city, Inverness Township and the downtown development authority of Inverness Township to develop any D A corridor. There hasn't been a lot that has occurred in that corridor. You know, we all admire. We're just trying to come into that, that is, uh, the wrong case. They still be more popular there. And that forty-three acres that they owns, prime real estate for a commercial business. But we need to give this a little water, put other than that D A corridor. To do that, we have to work with the city. And we're being through utility service agreements, we can get water out. We have a case, at least in northern part, in downtown development. And when the, when the D A Inverness Township developed, that was planned to run both water and sewer to that district. But you couldn't get the funding involved for the person. Inside it, run sewer and the city may, so it's first. Same would be the case, we get water up there, the city may, the waters. But you wouldn't have to do four twenty-five agreements, which are land-based agreements. Inverness Township would have the properties and it would be the taxable, that tax. And then, and then if we get water up there, that area of the development, they go. And should the Chilwell County project come to fruition, I know it's, it's on hold for a couple of reasons at this point. That D A corridor, and when Chilwell County gets built, that D A corridor will explode with commercial product. But not to use, not only what the past year has, but self-sacrifice city, not only what Travis City has, but we will get new business development. In that corridor. So that, that basically is the main reason that I would be, I want to be a county commissioner. If I'm not selected, I'm going to, I'm going to pursue that anyway. I, I talked to Bob Anderson, who's the chairperson of the downtown development authority of Inverness Township. But we've had a lot of conversation about how we can orchestrate that. The D A Inverness Township does have some funds that they've accumulated over the, the stretch of their D A. So they do have some monies. They would be out, certainly eligible for, for granting. Stand water out of the township because it would create jobs. So the state would look favorable yet, granting funding for the project.
Get to, get to comedy, comedy. Most of the commissioners when they get on this board always have some, why do I? Uh, can you express yours? Um, just to. The whole board has to buy into that. So now you have to sell it in the community to help yourself to the rest of the commissioners.
Absolutely. Yes.
We're on the same page.
I understand. Yes. Yeah, I just, my, my position is that we, this, the county has to grow, it's the. Capitalist society, if you don't have growth, um, you decline. So that's just one avenue. I mean, I, I'm not just going to focus on that one situation. There's multiple, multiple things that are, are going on in the county, if that's where our township is. The development and L E A has developed a commercial corridor, which works similar to D A. It has D A as well. They're trying to develop a commercial corridor between rain and business development.
It certainly contributes to all the different entities looking to achieve well for the citizens.
Sure. Sure. And I, and that's what, that's what we need, some growth and I'm a, I'm a huge advocate of public school system as well. And that's another area that's been in decline for a long period of time. We need to turn that around. The way to turn that around is to get people to move there, get families moving in their county. So that's another reason for developing Inverness Township.
Corridor.
Another part, I mean, you need to, we need to develop the side of the city of Chilwell. The two past gamer don't have water or sewer up there. That would be more of a residential development, I think, because it's highest and best used to build a residential building, a complex, that sort of stuff. I think all of those things have not been considered.
So that's a heads up for, for everybody. Appreciate it. Is there anything specific that you, you hope to accomplish, even though you know that? You'd have to look at reelection.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I would, I would be certainly involved in all aspects of the county.
If I'd be assigned to another, anywhere from one to six or seven different committees or commissions, depending, depending upon the law.
Yeah, I, you know, I participated in.
I saw it.
Budgets, I see. Um, having budgets as city manager, so that was responsible for those budgets, um. So I, I participated in the finance committee all twenty years I was at the city. So I understand, I understand municipal funding and how it works and what we can.
Okay, let's see if we got any questions to the commissioners. Anyone? Comments, but you just spent, I mean, especially. Um, this is a worker in bounty and then went to city or extensive background in Michigan, doesn't.
Sure.
Finance. It's pretty sober.
And I, I worked with him when I was there. I must say, as far as meetings and appointments and that, and he raised my opinion. So that's something to, that's something, because a lot of people, as you say, don't realize that this is, this is not a team meeting among. So there's a, but that's taken.
Career.
Example of, um.
Yeah, thank you. I think Tom, he, he gets around, around running because he's already involved with some of the organizations in L E A or and some of those one year.
Yeah, I know. You see Brownfield Ward around.
Yeah.
And so I think that he has brought so much to the light that if he took a vote for some of these, I think, in politicians. And a lot, a lot of E C Brownfield Ward, mainly because of the Chilwell County project, that's Brownfield site. Uh, in my tenure at the city, the assessors were always involved in Brownfield projects.
Yeah.
I was, uh, we did six Brownfield buyers in the city of Chilwell in twenty years at the city. So I'm very familiar with how Brownfield, that three went ahead and played to work. And how we get public, we get funded. And this, this Chilwell County project can, will not happen, cannot happen unless they get Brownfield Taxing Centers and Brownfield Power. This, it won't work. So we need to get to that point, uh, get them some state funding.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Mr. John.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Okay.
Um, are you still the city assessor or not?
No.
And, and if you're on the U D C board, that was, I think that membership is appointed by the Board of Commissioners?
It is.
You realize you might need to resign from that position if you become the commissioner?
Yes, I, I understand that. Yes.
I just want to make sure you, you were aware of that.
Yeah, definitely. It makes sense. And I, I do believe though, there are two commissioners on the Brownfield E C, E C board.
Oh, it could, but you would have, you're a columnist, the commissioner represented.
Yes, that's right.
I agree. Thanks. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Would you like to go next? Mark?
Oh, how am I left on? Should try to go there. My name is Richard. My name is Mark. I'm a, uh, Chilwell County resident since nineteen ninety-four. I have a back, uh, background in law enforcement, of course. Born and raised in St. Agnes, went to school in White State, had a master, or my degree in criminal justice with the minor public administration. Uh, started out my career. I had moved around. Uh, like I said, been gone, I was gone for quite some time, but I went to, uh, Manziel, police department. Worked there for a couple of years, uh, went over to ride the city for four years, uh, joined the state police. And then there, back then, you have a choice where you went. Uh, so I was starting out Romeo, Macomb County. And on Detroit, worked in Detroit, but the city, but in the state police was for four years and moved on. Uh, back in ninety-four, transferred up here to Chilwell. So I've ever to Chilwell, right, since ninety-four. So anybody knows over the years that's been around that, somebody said you get somewhere twenty-five years or consider it a low. So I am a local, I guess. So I'm very proud to be here, working in, when I retired from Chilwell in nineteen, uh, uh, two thousand and nineteen. And during that, uh, time, uh, I've been on the Lions Club for twenty-five years. I'm currently a Chilwell Lions Club treasurer, secretary. I'm also the vice president of the F O P, uh, going back when I was in state police, excuse me. That I was, uh, on the board for fourteen years. You had to be elected every two years for the M S B T A Cooper Association Board. Uh, I've dealt with grievances, stuff like that, sat on those committees and understand, um, that process. Uh, that goes as commissioner would be addressing with the union sector. So, um, I don't have a background as far as like Tom does and into different, those different areas, so. Reason I'm interested in, in getting on here, on this board, is bring, um, open mind. I like to be open-minded. I can change my opinion if somebody articulates why things happen. I'm not closed-minded. I sat here at the front door of the Scott Building for four years and kept my eyes open and listened to different things going on here. Uh, you know, I think all, you know, we could all sometimes do better in certain areas, uh, and be open-minded. Sometimes people don't want to be open-minded. But I work well with people. I'm a people person. I respect other people's, uh, opinions. Um, I really do. And, uh, I, I, I don't step out with my background as far as where I come from. Like I said, I served in law enforcement. That's something, uh, that I really enjoy, but I do, uh, willing to work, not closed-minded. I learn, make everybody start somewhere on this board. When you start the first time, you don't have all the answers. Nobody does. Everybody tells you that, and I'm going to be honest with you. The one thing about me is, I'll tell you, if you want to know, just ask me, I'll tell you. You may not as like my answer, but I will tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just appreciate.
Yeah, your name is Mark. I'll be Mark forever.
Yeah. Certainly a community man here, involved in many, yeah, for many years.
And, uh, you know what, too, also, you have to look at is being on the board. As you know, everybody knows here, you have your townships that you have to get going back in. You have to listen to your board. You have to listen to the Inverness Township, all the township. My big concern being in one of the Inverness Township too, is what Tom had mentioned, something is about the, uh, the sewer system. Almost everybody that's on the residential is paying almost a thousand dollars a year for sewer. So my thing is, constituents, I want where you, you serve for the whole county, but you also have to get elected. And you have to listen to your constituents. And I think some past history is showing, if you don't, you may not be around. And, and I would not, I will tell you this, I will not forget where you're going to get elected from. This is this is appointment, but then you'll have to go through, like you said, John, every two years for another, for election. Correct.
Four number.
Right.
Four years. You have to run for the, you have to, you have a collection on twenty-sixth if you get reelected. That would be two remaining.
Two, two year. Correct. Right. Yes.
But permanent county for, for you if not.
Oh, it is.
Along with those.
Okay.
Can you have things for Mark?
Thank you, Mark.
I get.
Appreciate you putting that. Who else?
Ben, you're Anna.
Yes.
Prazenski.
That's right.
Pretty close, huh?
I think you said.
That was correct. Um, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be interviewed myself and she love. Um, my name is Joana Prazenski, and I am a resident of Inverness Township. Um, I moved to Inverness Township eleven years ago with my husband's son to raise my son in this wonderful community. Um, my grandparents moved to Chilwell County fifty years ago when I was over five years old. And I remember always thinking, I want to live up here. And when my child turned five and was getting ready to start schooling, we decided that was the time to move to Chilwell to raise our son. And, um, it, it has been the biggest blessing for my family. And I just feel so fortunate to be a part of this becoming the township. Um, prior to moving to Inverness Township, um, I worked for a large financial institution, um, Comerica Bank. And, um, after, um, twenty years of banking, um, being in management, I decided I wanted to take a different, um, course, um, and a career choice. I, um, became a licensed insurance agent for Triple A. Um, during that time, I was able to grow a book of business, um, because of my honesty and integrity to others, to review what they were presenting me when we tried to, to become married. Um, after two years of doing that, um, I decided that this would be the perfect spot also, um, to open up an agency. Um, after I moved to Inverness Township and produced my own, I was told there was no longer a book of business that it could be cut to establish my agency, um, here in town. Um, a couple of months later, I, um, I after commuting to Detroit to Chilwell, um, I was, um, hired as a manager at Comerica Bank. I was there for approximately eighteen months. I managed two renovations. And, um, after some restructuring, um, that had taken place, um, and cuts, I was looking for another opportunity. So at that point, I was hired by Progressive, or I'm sorry, Progressive Insurance. I'm a licensed insurance agent. However, um, for the last approximately eight, eight years that I worked for them, um, I switched roles about three years ago, and now I'm an insurance underwriter. Um, I work really late. Um, I have a flexible schedule. I can work anywhere from four A M. Sunday morning until midnight on Saturday to get my hours in. So I do have a lot of flexibility. Um, I do not have, um, customer contact or any conflicts of interest in my position. Um, that would cause any type of issue here, um, if I was appointed, um, commissioner. Also, um, I have a lot of experience with budget. I also have experience with reviewing, um, contract, contracts, the five, follows state ordinances, um, insurance laws, yeah, even financial laws. So that is very important to me, to understand, um, the policies and the procedures, the crackaway, of handling things. And to review everything thoroughly before making a decision. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, I was approached, um, by, um, local figures of influence in Inverness Township, to run as Inverness Township treasurer during the recall election. Um, I was appointed, or not appointed, I was, um, elected and by the board, or by the constituents, um, for the remaining two-year term. Um, I was not reelected, um, for the, the following, you know, following period. Um, I do feel very passionately about Chilwell and their growth. Um, there are so many opportunities here and we all need to be open-minded so we can have that growth to attract other families, businesses, especially maybe one here. Um, and if you grow this township, you get more, more professionals that we need here. Um, I'm very passionate about everything that I do. And if I don't know the answer, I do not hesitate to ask. Um, it is just very important to me to be transparent. I know I don't have all the answers. I don't have any that's serious, such as, um, one minute or Mars. Um, but in the, you know, twenty years of my financial, um, experience, insurance experience, customer relations, um, I think that can speak thousands. Also, um, if I am appointed, I'm ready to do what is expected of me, um, by our constituents. I know it's very important to earn the respect of our constituents and, um, other, um, high official and other municipalities. Um, while I was the treasurer in the municipality, um, it was a little bit of a hostile situation. And my fault, I was always available, even though at that point I was working from home, my full-time job. At that point, I didn't have the flexibility per se. Definitely I get to have the flexibility per se, um, to take a call right at that moment, I learned how to, to manage it. Now my position's a little bit different, um, I have that flexibility more so. Um, also, while I was learning to be, the, um, duties of treasurer, I was able to attend, um, numerous trainings on five district and township association. I was able to meet a lot of other, um, board members from other townships, not only in Shuwa again, but in other areas in northern Michigan. And even though I have only been a resident for eleven years, I do, of Inverness Township, I do consider Shuwa again. So, um, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Correct? Thanks so much, appreciate you putting your hats on as well. So, or when would you like to make a decision, you know, you'd like to move over a bit, maybe? We need to get next year, do you think?
The issue. I'm asking the press. I'll answer the comment, like you say, it's just so great there.
Yeah.
Oh, that is one, like, I'm concerned, like, glad a couple to be going through this and be getting some good candidates, so. And I said, if someone come to buy the sector, it's nice to have people that have worked in the public sector. That's kind of, like, thanks, and he don't like his, can't give out money type thing, you're going in and you need, now, this out, where he says, because, you know, a lot of these are coming to me.
A lot of me needs to be.
Well, the public, really, sometimes, really, it's not just, like you said, it's not, you can change your mind, it's, or it's not about my position, it's for the constituents. I think I feel myself, I think he's. But generally, that we've had the opportunity, that we knew there are avenues for a couple of days here, so. I'd like to move forward right now.
All right. The consensus is the majority. Okay. We can entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that, uh, you perceive my nominee, Tom, is just, well, is just, I'll support it.
So we have a motion in support. Any discussion? Any other nominations?
Ms. Ossman?
Yes.
Ms. Stansfield?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Clerman?
Yes.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes. Wow, that's six oh in one day, I thank you so much. Appreciate you all being involved, and stay involved, please. We have a lot of different committees and commissions that we can appoint. And we really appreciate, if you want to swear. Yeah, I have, I have to exit here and, and, uh, Mr. Sancho, take over the meeting, I have to go, because I'll be. Let's take a seven minute break. Thank you.